Yeah, we gotta try. I know. Oh, got it.
Right.
Alright. Yeah, you're in the middle of the conversation.
Oh, wow.
Sorry, I'm Kyle.
Kyle? An area.
An area.
This is where you're from?
Uh, oh, here's the last eight years, Massachusetts.
Oh, I'm from Massachusetts.
Uh, what's around here? Level.
I'm from Connecticut.
It's possible.
Um, I'm sure it's like the same.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
I remember. The same thing. I started to change. So it's some kind of feed from here, right?
So that's your one to two.
Yeah, it's just the old type of one way. When the point one is that actually one channel. I don't know if you can see it. Four channels and skip them up. We're launching the survey. Um, with the, um, our high goal purpose for the year.
Oh, that's cool.
Not quite as usual as rest. I saw it.
Yeah, I love your my speech. Yes.
Uh, the people who take their seats were about to get started?
Yeah, exactly.
Alright, so welcome everybody. My name is Tom Pickle Pearl. I am the commissary of Bunsen Square Players and also the co-chair of this commission on art monuments and markers. And I have with me here today several of our commissioners. I'm going to ask them to introduce themselves. This is the first of five public hearings that we're going to have, one in each borough. And we're really happy to see everybody here today. So if the other commissioners who are here with us today could simply introduce ourselves, starting with Gonzalo.
Gonzalo Castas, Leslie Lomond Museum and Russell Institute at Haddon College.
John Calvelli, Wildlife Conservation Society and Chair of the Cultural Institutions Group.
Justin Moore, Executive Director of the New York City Public Design Commission.
I'm Richard Alburn on the faculty of the Graduate Center of the City University of New York.
Great, thank you so much. So I have a brief presentation. I want to, you know, give a little bit of background about the commission, what we've been doing, how we're thinking about things, the charge of the commission. And then we're really here to listen to you today. We're going to have people sit over here and give their testimony. Everything is being transcribed, as you can see, so just want to say that out loud. There will be a transcript of this public meeting. So we are the, um, commission on monuments and markers. We have been charged by the mayor to come up with general policies. But I want to say first, and I think people in Queens understand this quite clearly. If you see the picture up here, that's a picture of a sculpture called Civic Virtue. It was put in front of City Hall in 1922. Uh, Queens people will remember that it got put in front of, right next to Borough Hall, uh, for years. It's been now moved to Greenwood Cemetery. But I just want to say that the idea that there are controversies around public art or people are worried about public art is not a new thing. It's been going on in New York City for a very long time. Um, in the country, we obviously understand that there are, this is a moment in which people are thinking about monuments. Obviously, we see in the slide there on the left is the monument to Robert E. Lee in, uh, Charlottesville, which created the protests at which somebody was eventually killed. On the right, you see a monument in Philadelphia to Mayor Rizzo, which has become quite controversial. There's a big controversy around that. It's, uh, right in front of City Hall and there's questions about whether that mayor, um, you know, represents the values of Philadelphia. I'm not weighing in on any of these, simply saying that there are controversies are happening all over America and that is why we have this commission. Next slide, please. So the mayor, uh, formed this commission. Uh, we have, uh, sixteen members, I believe. Uh, they're from a whole variety of points of view, uh, variety of professions, I will say also. All the people you see up here are men. There are plenty of women on this commission as well. But the Mayor Advisory Commission on Monuments, Markers, uh, Art Monuments and Markers will advise the mayor on issues surrounding public art and historic monuments and markers on city-owned property by the end of the year. The kinds of, uh, objects are, um, that we are considering. Next slide, please. So I just wanted to also put this in the context of an existing process. So what we're talking about now is step one is we're going to make, commission is going to make recommendations. That will be handed over and will be made into mayoral policy. Uh, so the commission will make recommendations. This is an incredible group of smart people. They're going to come up with great ideas, but that's non-binding. It's going to be made into policy. And then it's very important to note, and Justin, who is sitting here on my left, is the head of the Public Design Commission. And there's a charter mandated, um, procedure which will remain in place. And that procedure includes, uh, that agency making a recommendation. So let's say something's on Parks Department property. The Parks Department would make a recommendation. You would then go to the community board hearing and go to the Public Design Commission. Public Design Commission was founded in the nineteenth century and that is the final say on things that are on city property. So I just want to make that very clear. We are not alone in this. There are jurisdictions all over America that have formed commissions quite like this. And here's just a map of some of those. We've been on the phone with some of these folks. We've been talking to people in different cities, looking at the findings from those other cities. So it is something, it's a national discussion, uh, and we have been discussing this and looking at models from other cities. So we wanted to, um, tell you a little bit about some of the discussions that have been going on in our, uh, commission. And there are certain words that keep coming up and ideas that keep coming up. And those include historical accuracy, that it's important to understand the history of a particular site, a particular person. It's a very big moment for historians, uh, participation. We're here in public. There's a participatory process that is part of this and should remain part of this. There's this whole question of power, like who has the power to put up a monument? And, uh, what does that mean? Complexity is important. The commission keeps saying it's important not to, uh, take away the complexity of the history of the city. Um, there's this, the word inclusive keeps coming up. We want to make sure that we have inclusive public spaces in New York City. And finally, there's this possibility for the future, which has to do with not simply, uh, subtracting that add. So what can we do to add to the fabric of New York City? Possibility of new commissions, et cetera. So here are some guiding principles that are, again, this is still under discussion. These are things that came up, uh, at all of our commission meetings. And again, these are some of the same words that we just talked about, uh, which has to do with inclusion, historical understanding, complexity, and reckoning with power. So these are some of the values, so that the idea is first the commission sort of establishes some values and then some procedures. So we also just wanted to say that, that when you think about adding to the fabric of New York City, you know, mostly people are thinking about, let's say, the center of the top. This is a added monument to Harriet Tubman up in Harlem and that is fine and that's interesting and that's absolutely something we've been doing over the last, uh, decades. But there's also temporary artistic interventions. For example, on the top left, uh, an artist named Edgar Hippo Bird's is, uh, one of his projects is to let people know what nation's, uh, land you're on in a particular moment. On the far right at the top is a, uh, an ongoing project by an artist who's in the sanitation department, Artisan Residents, and she has been doing works that relate to sanitation workers and parades. And so there, there are other kinds of traditions that might be more like a performance, like a temporary, uh, work. There are also different kinds of institutions, like a new institution, if you think of the, um, Center for Jewish History down in Battery Park. That is a monument to, uh, memory of the Holocaust. There's educational, there's public dialogue. So I just wanted to put on the table, uh, this is a lot of stuff that's been discussed quite a bit at the commission meetings, uh, the idea that there are lots of different things aside from simply people sitting on pedestals. Next slide, please. So we are really here to listen to you, try to keep our comments at the beginning short. Uh, we want to emphasize that it's a hearing format. Uh, each speaker will have three minutes to give testimony. People are going to sit over here. I will call out the names and we're going to seat people three at a time. Um, the, uh, okay, hold on. I'm sorry. Uh, Robert Holden? Oh, okay, Councilman-elect. So tradition has it that elected officials or elect, uh, future elected officials get to jump the line. And we're going to start with, uh, Mr. Holden. Um, okay, so if you would like to, uh, make a statement. Good morning. And then we'll, we'll bring our first panel here in a second.
Thanks, thanks for, uh, holding this hearing. I, I do think that we have to, uh, proceed cautiously. Um, this country made mistakes, obviously. Our history is full of, and full of mistakes and, uh, and we shouldn't, uh, judge, um, the, our art or monuments on, uh, on today only. So it's the history that's very, very important. And, and those mistakes are there, obviously, and we have to consider that, um, in any kind of monuments. But if there's some that are so egregious, yes, I agree, some that are insulting to, to the population, yes, they, they, they should be removed. But let's, let's not destroy our past, um, to be politically correct now. Um, and let's look at and weigh, and I know the task you have at hand is, is, you know, is daunting. But at this point, um, let's not change who we are. And we do have a past that, um, yes, it's controversial, some statues, obviously Civil War figures. But we really have to think about this. And I know it, you guys deliberate and certainly, you know, come back with recommendations. And I just hope the mayor actually listens and, and to the people. Because then that's why we're here today, to hear the people. But there's more than, um, more testimony that has to come from other areas. And at this point, I respect your, and you know, you have, again, uh, some issues to deal with. Um, and I would just say, um, let's not lose our dignity. Good or bad. Thank you.
Okay, and I think we're going to then seat our first panel. Thank you very much. Uh, this is, if I could have John Hatfield, Jacob Morris, and Sharni Rex. Each of you will get their chance to speak, um, for three minutes. If I may say, while they're being seated, there's also an online, uh, opportunity for you to weigh in. We've already gotten actually a couple of thousand people, New Yorkers have, or New Yorkers and others have, um, given their opinion. We're, um, we have, I'm sorry. Uh, four more of these, um, hearings in other boroughs. So if you know folks that couldn't make it here, even if you're from Queens, you can go to one in Brooklyn. And then this is the, uh, the schedule, um, which is available online. And then also, do you have the final slide that tells you how it? We'll put that slide up. Okay. NYC.gov/monumentscommission. If you see that address right there, it gives you the time and place of each of these subsequent hearings and also gives you the opportunity to fill out an online form. With that, sorry, uh, to deviate, who will you start with, Tom?
Hello, my, uh, I'll be reading my testimony this morning. Uh, my name is John Hatfield and I am the Executive Director of Socrates Sculpture Park in Queens. Uh, I'm grateful to be able to offer my testimony this morning. Uh, I want to start by applauding the efforts of Mayor De Blasio, Commissioner Pickle Pearl, Mayor Walker in this commission for taking up such a complicated task. Having also worked at the Lower Manhattan Development Corporation during the process and selection of the 9/11 memorial, I have experienced what it means to grapple with opposing perspectives on the social, cultural, political, and historical role. Monuments, uh, memorials and sculptures play the collective expression of our values as a society. Socrates Sculpture Park has produced and presented over twelve hundred temporary public art works for over thirty years. And in that time, we have faced our own, uh, controversies. There are also three sculptures in the park, um, by the artist John Ahern, which were originally a public art commission for the Bronx, but were removed following a short contentious battle. For almost twenty-five years, the sculptures have been at Socrates and provided the point of departure for dialogue that we have explored in our educational program. Based on these experiences, I come here this morning to humbly offer a few thoughts to consider in your deliberations. First, um, there is no such thing as a permanent monument. Nothing created by human beings is in perpetuity. Throughout history, individuals, governments, communities have made decisions to create, destroy, or preserve monuments, memorials, or public sculptures. It's always an active effort, whether it is the Pyramids of Giza, the Buddha's of Afghanistan, Confederate or Stalinist monuments with the Statue of Liberty. Creating, maintaining, preserving, or removing is an effort and a choice. Secondly, given that it is an active choice, let's not shy away from the conversation and be open to the differences of opinion on these matters. Part of the effort of artworks created for the public realm is the ongoing dialogue it creates through conversations, resource allocation, and decisions. I hope our current conversations and your policy recommendations will be guided through the lens of the cultural and historical values of our city, not by either elitist view or by populist opinion, and not by the heat of the moment or by political expediency. Elected officials have made the right decision to empower a commission to make thoughtful recommendations that have an impact beyond this generation into the next. Just as I experienced at the 9/11 memorial jury, I am pardoned to see the breadth and scope of expertise for the task. I ask you to please take your time. The issues which are raised through these conversations and debates are not easily resolved and be mindful that it takes exponentially more time to create than it does to remove or to destroy. It's, it's my hope and a more difficult task that the commission will make a nuanced policy recommendation where every monument, under consideration, might be given the opportunity to be assessed thoughtfully and thoroughly in this specific context. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you very much. So just, we do have a buzzer here, but we're going to be a little bit flexible. If you're trying to wrap it up, then I'll go on for an hour. But, uh, if you have a couple of seconds extra, so I think we're going to go then to Jacob Morris and then to Sharni Rex. Okay, thank you.
I guess I'm, uh, Jacob Morris, I'm the director of the Harlem Historical Society.
Can you get a little bit closer to the mic?
Um, I'm the director of the Harlem Historical Society and the New York City Freedom Trust. So I'm going to say I feel like, um, the parameters of the commission are, uh, flawed, uh, in a fairly fundamental way. Um, so the two of the most egregious, um, instances here in New York City are the Tweet Courthouse. Named after Boss Tweet, the most corrupt elected official in our city's history. Is not the Tweet Courthouse a form of a monument? And it's the headquarters of our public street system? This is egregious. This guy is, so I guess what I'm trying to say is, is, um, ultimately what, what this commission has to come up with is where is the line? Where's the line in history? And when does it become so egregious that you got to get rid of this person's name or their likeness or their symbolism? Because they're just way over the line. So, you know, we're not going to have any statues of Hitler. We're not going to have any statues of Stalin. And, you know, Boss Tweet, we got to take his name off that courthouse. And maybe this esteemed commission will recommend that. Because I see that even the parameters, it's possible you could enlarge your purview to include something like the Tweet Courthouse, being named after somebody that's worthy, not like a Boss Tweet who's super corrupt. And this is what our children learn in school. And then there's Rikers Island. Sold to New York City to be the headquarters, the largest penal institution in North America. A symbol and a reality of injustice, we all know this. And who was Richard Riker? This guy was the center of a web of kidnapping, among which was black children. Thoroughly documented by National Book Award and Pulitzer Prize-winning historians. I believe it was like in eighteen thirty-six. They actually, these bounty hunters went into a classroom in, um, the African free schools and they pulled an eight-year-old black boy out of the classroom and brought him before Richard Riker's court. To sell into slavery because under the Fugitive Slave Act, he got kickbacks from every bounty hunting ring in New York City. If he wasn't the chief magistrate and perverting our system of justice. So take his name off Rikers Island. And, oh, by the way, uh, in the lead-up to this, I saw the picture of Harriet Tubman. I personally got over two thousand signatures from residents of Harlem that want her facing north towards freedom, not south towards slavery. That's, and this was when they put the statue up. That was expediency. Expediency is something else that the members of the commission need to, um, consider. Thank you. Thank you very much. Sharni Rex.
Hello. Um, I'm going to be speaking from my perspective, um, as a young woman with indigenous descent. Um, I'm here because I want to have a critical lens of what the statues mean in New York City. I think the statues should reflect what the city reflects. And then New York City, um, prides itself on being inclusive and diverse in the United States, but also in the world. It's okay.
It's not three minutes.
Um, so, uh, I think that a lot of the statues right now do not reflect that. I think a lot of the statues, specifically talking about statues and monuments in high-traffic areas, um, are a lot of older white men. I think, um, for indigenous people, people of color, especially young folks, it's problematic that we have to look up and see white men on these pedestals and we can't see any statues that look like us. I think Harriet Tubman is placed in Harlem for a reason, but that's not, that's not the main points of traffic, um, in New York City. Uh, it's problematic for young indigenous women, young folks of color, to look up and not see anybody that reflects it. What does that mean for my identity? What does that mean for my ability to navigate New York City? What's my role in having a voice, um, in politics? Um, what's my role in, in being validated among the narrative of the city? Um, so I think we need to be really critical about what these statues reflect. I think the, uh, original reason that some statues went up don't matter today. I think when the Convis statues went up, it was to, you know, create some sense of unity among, um, American folks uh, because he will discover, you know, what is now America. But now that we have all the information released about what is in his diary, is that what we really want to have on the pedestal in the middle of Convis Circle? And this is not an attack at all on Italians. I think there's Italian culture is beautiful and they've done so much, um, work and advancement in the, in labor rights. There's a lot of other, um, votes that we could consider, Italian votes that we could consider replacing the statue. Um, but I think first what we need to concentrate on is the critiquing of the current statues. Why are, why are they up and what do they mean? Um, and then, once we have a more, a bigger conversation around with educational context, historical context, then we can talk about what's the exit strategy for moving it and the best way for New Yorkers and our tax money and what would be, what would be replacing it. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. Uh, we're going to ask people to return from applause. We, usually the hearing format, we do something like that, which is the, uh, another inclusive way to do it. Uh, okay, thank you. Thanks for the first panel. The next panel is Rich Turley, Jonathan Cranz, and Jeffrey Pressley. Yeah, oh, yes. Oh, I'm sorry, this is about, I'm sorry, yes. Rick, you're the right person. Okay, uh, so we're going to start with, with Rick. Chapel, I'm sorry to this. Go ahead.
How can I meet the menuway? Richard Boya, Kumiay.
You have, I'm sorry, I'm so sorry. You have to press the button so the red light is on. Go ahead.
How can I meet the menuway? Richard Boya, Kumiay. This is probably messing up the prompter, but I just introduced myself in the Kumiay language, which is my culture. Um, I'm Rick Chaboya. Greetings and thank you for having me and thank you to the commission and to Mayor De Blasio for having us proceedings. And, uh, I am, uh, the board chair of the American Indian Community House, which serves native people here in, uh, New York City and the surrounding area. There are in fact, by last census, a hundred and ten thousand native people who live in New York City. Oftentimes people don't know that we exist anymore, but we in fact do, and we live here in New York City. I'm from tribal nations all, all over the world, actually. Um, so I'm very honored to be here. I also take a moment to I also take a moment to thank and give blessings to the Napa people. The Napa were the original people of this land and this is their ancestral homeland. So, we thank them for allowing us to be on their land. I want to bring forth a couple of ideas. The first is that history is always changing. And that's part of what's amazing about New York City is that it changes with history. It's been already pointed out that this is just a fact of life. And there are symbols and emphasis that have been come and gone all throughout our history. But one that remains and stands strong and we still believe in is the Statue of Liberty. When people look out there, they believe in what it represents. Democracy, the right of people to come here for freedom, the right of people to have homes and to have the sanctity of their home not taken from them and to be able to progress in ways that make their life better. And that symbol went up, the Statue of Liberty went up because there were a lot of people who didn't believe some people belonged here in the United States. And I'll say specifically, there were a lot of people, you can look at the Chronicles of New York Times, a federal newspaper, that records the fact that there were public figures and a lot of powerful people who were saying that many people didn't belong in New York City, not the least of which were people from Southern Europe, right? And so, in order to combat that way of thinking, a symbol went up that said, no, you are in fact welcome here. We are a democracy. You do believe in what you, in your right to live well and to have a home and to do good things for others. And that's what's happened since then. There's other statues that don't symbolize that. And that's the Statue of Columbus and the statues around the city of Columbus. And what they do is they glorify a figure who is against all the things that the Statue of Liberty represents. Christopher Columbus, by his own diary and by his own admission, looked at the generous people of the Americas, the native people. Instead of feeling good about their welfare, instead, what he did is he enslaved them. He dispossessed them. He took their land. He married the women. If people didn't give him enough tribute and gold, he chopped their hands off. He was responsible for all kinds of atrocities. These are not imperfections. These are the core part of who he was. And they represent everything we do not want to be as people of New York City or people of this world. And so, these symbols to people like this cannot remain. They need to be taken down because they're not just a small example of imperfection. They're the core part of what this person believed and came and brought that to this country. We cannot allow that to be a symbol and to glorify that as New Yorkers. Thank you.
Thank you. Jonathan?
All right. Just to be more inclusive, I'm speaking really for myself. I think we should take a look at the Shakespeare statue in Central Park, considering the Merchant of Venice and Odello. His opinions at that time when he wrote might be objectionable to some. I know it's court authority, but certainly we could look at some bridges and airports, which are named for people who, although fairly recent in our lives, had reputations that are now being called into question. We have schools with names on them. Perhaps there are people who object to the Norman Thomas High School for his points of view. And maybe there should be a mayoral committee to consider the names of people on schools and whether they are deservedly so. Similar to what the gentleman said before about the Tweet Courthouse. We attach names, but not as monuments, but we attach them to buildings because we want to honor somebody and perhaps we could look back at some of their behavior. Two other institutions that are based on the fabulous wealth of very unpleasant men. One is the Ford Foundation. And one only needs to read Henry Ford's writings and understand that he was not the nicest or most loyal man toward anybody other than himself. He used thugs to attack his labor. And yet, we honor the Ford Foundation. The chairman is not here, but he has his basis in the wealth of Henry Ford. And that was John D. Rockefeller. Rockefeller Center, the treaty, Rockefeller University. Yet, the basis of the wealth of that family is by destroying opposition. And Ida Corbella has written about that. Perhaps, though, to move on quickly, why does the Board of Education still celebrate Columbus Day? If there is so much opposition to Columbus, perhaps that day should go back to the school system and should be a day of study and history. Maybe we can persuade the teachers and students to read Gotham by Michael Wallace. Excellent book about the history of New York and very open about both the bad and the good of the city. And should we, you know, with our current president and his behavior, should we look at whether the New York City Police Department should be expending the funds to protect him in a manner that costs us as taxpayers? And should we lay that on to the federal government? For he is a federal government employee. So, therefore, perhaps beyond what you're doing, it could be more inclusive and through lots of other uses of people's names on buildings, which are not perhaps monuments, but perhaps we should take a look at whether we should just simply number our schools and be done with all the names on them. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeffrey Kressler.
Thank you. My name is Jeffrey Kressler. I'm a librarian at John Jay College of Criminal Justice. I received my doctorate in American urban history from the CUNY Graduate School, where I studied with Arthur Schlesinger in the late 80s when he was writing The Disuniting of America. I recommend that short work to this committee. He was among the first to recognize the cancer of identity politics and its negative impact on our body politic. In the mid-'90s, I was one of the leading opponents of the Queen Catherine of Beganza statue, a plan pushed forward by the Portuguese-American community and supported by Earl President Schulman and the entire Queens political establishment. No one asked the historians. The idea was that since Queens was named for Queen Catherine, we should have a statue. She was the wife of Charles II of England. The only problem was there was absolutely no evidence that Queens was named for Queen Catherine. None, zero, nada. So, if she was not the namesake of the borough, why were we erecting the statue? It was very far along. I argued that it represented the wrong values. First, she was the royal house of Portugal and the royal house of England, both of which profited mightily from the African slave trade. Secondly, there was the minor incident known as the American Revolution, where we rejected monarchy and the English monarchy in particular. So, I had many problems with the notion of erecting Queen Catherine of Beganza. That said, I categorically rejected her because she had nothing to do with American history, nothing to do with America. At the same time, I categorically reject the idea that any of the statuary or historical monuments or markers in the city of New York should be removed. Not one. As a historian, as a New Yorker, as an American, I recoil at the notion of whitewashing history. History is not pretty. History doesn't care having appeal. Baltimore removed the statue of Roger Tawney. He was chief justice of the Supreme Court. He removed... He was the one who wrote the wretched and racist Fred Scott decision, which sent our nation further and faster along the road towards civil war. How will we know about the evil he did in that decision? By removing the statue, we've eliminated this possibility. Someone walking by and saying to his companion, "Hey, do you know who that is?" "No." "That's Roger Tawney. Do you know what he did? Do you know what that son of a bitch did?" You kind of missed the opportunity to say that because his statue isn't there. Roger Tawney doesn't exist. Roger Tawney never existed. That, by the way, is a reference to George Orwell's 1984, wherein the party governs and rules according to this principle. Who controls the past controls the present. Who controls the present controls the future. So, I urge you against whitewashing the past because it will result in a kind of monolithic thinking and a diminishing of the complexity of American history. And we need to remind ourselves of who we were even when we were wrong. Thank you.
Thank you. The next panel, the next three, is Robert Bishop, Virginia Caputo, and Gerard Madicata. Okay, we're gonna start with Robert Bishop.
Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to address you. Thank you for your patience and your persistence. It's good to see a good delegation from the commission here. My name is Robert Bishop. I live in Little Lake. I am a native of Queens. And generally, my testimony is formatted based on your questionnaire. I'm not gonna read the whole thing. I'll submit it. I wanna go sort of to the need of what I'm doing. Is Stanley commissioning a website on monuments? I checked, 11362, we don't have any monuments. We probably have some room for that. I think the closest thing we have is Little Marfer and Alley Honk Park. You know, my comments relate to all of the existing and proposed monuments. It's my suggestion that the presumption should be preserved monuments unless there's a virtually universal agreement from the body politic to remove a specific monument. Controversy provides interest. Interest provides educational opportunity. Education leads to understanding. Removal monument tends to erase memory. Removal may effectively remove a symptom, but it fails to provide an educational path to understanding. The prior speaker referenced the dystopian novels as 1984, Fahrenheit 451, Bleed, several others, that were fleet with descriptions of cultures built around erasing and rewriting history. The results usually involve a failed effort to create an entirely homogenized society without tolerance of divergent opinion. And that's just not the New York City story. The infrastructure of the solution is in place. As I mentioned, the Parks Department maintains a website at arts.org art slash art dot com, which maps and describes most all, if not all, of the public monuments in New York City with relatively small improvements. The site can be really made user-friendly. You know, you can't do that site through your phone. And you could do an app. If you combine it with the technology that you see in the Talking Statues pilot project, where you basically can walk up to a monument, scan a QR code, and it starts talking to you, you've really got the start of something. You can link all the educational information, all signs of any controversy, to those types of sites. You can do far more than being limited to a bronze plaque. A bronze plaque is like trying to get it all into a Twitter comment, even though they've doubled the letters. In closing, I urge you to use this opportunity that's afforded to you as members of the commission to continue the dialogue. Your time in the spotlight on this issue presents an opportunity to unite people through an educational process. And I really hope you seize the moment. Thank you.
Perfect. Virginia Caputo.
I'm a resident of Queens, like Lauren. I'd just like to make a brief point about statues and monuments and the value of art and its reflections on history. This beautiful city has a rich history of art and cultural pieces. Beauty abounds through art, statues, and architecture throughout each borough, on the streets, boroughs, and buildings. Tourists and citizens can see this beauty every day. We should not live in a vacuum and judge the past by our values and standards of today. We are a tolerant and progressive city. Humanity has a long and complicated struggle to achieve where we are today. When I watch a historical show, I can reflect on the past. Hey, I watch old movies, even recent ones, and marvel at the transformation of roles of women today. This assault on statues is starting to look like McCarthyism in the 1950s. Look it up, kids. During the Cultural Revolution in China, Mao destroyed and tried to erase China's past for the new communist world. In April of 2015, ISIS destroyed a 2,000-year-old statue and shrines in Hatra, an Iraq city, on its war on culture because it didn't conform to their very narrow interpretations of Islam. The civic virtue statue, triumphant over righteousness, that stood outside, was moved to a cemetery. This represented a classic male civic virtue standing over the female representations of vice and corruption. No little girl can currently ask, what does that mean? And Queens residents are robbed of a beautiful classical piece of art. Rome, the ultimate Catholic city... Sorry. Could take down the Colosseum, a symbol of hate where so many early Christians were brutally treated. America, New York City, is who we are today because of that long road. Don't erase that. Christopher Columbus was a daring explorer who lived in the Renaissance of the Middle Ages and lived on those standards of that time. We all have stories. As a descendant of Italian immigrants, I have heard how my ancestors were mistreated and had to climb mountains to achieve the American dream. New stories are being written today by current immigrants. We do not know how the pendulum will swing in the future and how our actions of today will be perceived. Do not set a dangerous precedent.
Thank you. Gerard?
Hello? My name is Jerry Madicata. I've been involved in education for the last 50 years. I was a teacher in the New York City Board of Education. As a history teacher, right now, I teach at Queensborough Community College the History Seminar Series, which I started in 2000 to national accolades and local accolades. When I first heard about this committee, I was very, very angry because of the things that I've heard here today. McCarthyism, 1984. But right now, I'm not as angry anymore. When I wrote this last night, my anger dissipated because the committee, and that's because of the study of history. This committee is made up of only one or two historians and is not qualified to make value judgments on historical correctness. Not qualified. But its findings will be meaningless anyhow. Meaningless. Because there've been groups like this throughout history that have formed. The ancient Egyptians and new pharaohs that came in took off the names of the old pharaohs. Rome tried to erase Carthage and the name of Hannibal. Last week, two new books came out about General Hannibal. The Visigoths destroyed Rome. Rome still lives. Lenin Trotsky and Stalin destroyed all previous history, destroyed statues, churches. The most visited site in Russia today is where the Soviets killed the Tsar. The most visited site in Russia today. In the 1930s, the Nazis burned books. Those books are wrecked today. In 2001, the Taliban destroyed the Statue of Buddha. That Buddha, and Buddha still lives. In 1967, Mao tried to destroy Chinese history and culture in the Cultural Revolution. Today, the very government that is there is trying to rebuild that history. A terrible government, similar to some of the people on this panel. A government that tells people what is right and what is wrong. The bottom line is the people decide what is right, what is wrong. This is a country built on freedom and democracy, not bureaucrats telling us what is correct and what is not correct. An intelligent and knowledgeable person knows that taking down statues and changing history textbooks, taking down street names or banning free speech will not alter history in the future. It won't. I just went over that. All historical passages are flawed because they are human. They reflect the era in which they live. This is why historians have different opinions on historical events and people in history. Instead of taking down these monuments, let's put up, I agree with Bob, on these apps. Let's put up a history app on each of the monuments, letting people that go by those monuments see what they are. But those apps should be very, very put together correctly with different opinions on Columbus. I heard... I heard one opinion here from a gentleman, that's his opinion, and he's entitled to that. We live in the United States of America. I have a different opinion on Columbus, and I'm entitled to that. And everyone in this room has an entitlement to their own opinion, not to be told by bureaucrats what's correct, what is right, what is wrong. That's why we fought in 1776, that's why we had a civil war, that's why we have a country that is the greatest country on this earth. And with all due respect, I respect who you are, but I do not respect the panel. Thank you.
Okay, the next panel, the next group, will be Jennifer Habach. Is that Thabo Salam? And William Greger. Of Craigworth. So you, Jennifer, and...
I'm waiting.
William? Thabo Salam. Thabo Salam. Okay, Jennifer.
Hello. Good morning, my name is Jennifer Habach. I am thankful to have a chance to speak today. I am a genealogist, and I help people know the true story of their ancestors and family. The process of this can be very healing. I believe that the United States as a country needs to undo our history, relearn, and heal. And one step in this process is to be truthful about our history. Christopher Columbus was only revered after the Revolutionary War, because the folks who fought in that war, including my ancestors, wanted to separate from the British and have a different story of our family. He never even stepped foot on the mainland that is now called the United States. He tortured and enslaved indigenous people, and being anti-Columbus is not being anti-Attain. We need to relearn this history. Jane Mary Sims, a statue in Central Park, honors a man who experimented on enslaved black women to supposedly learn medicine. The statue also needs to be removed. New York City claims to be progressive and often judges the South, but how are we really different? The current statues have whitewashed our history and celebrated racism. Each monument should be judged by who it is that we want to celebrate. What if all of the statues were of mothers, not of war heroes and murderers? It's time, you have a big opportunity to make progress, please don't squander it, thank you.
Thank you. So I wanted to welcome a group from John F. Kennedy High School. And the next will be Mr. Salam, and then we'll get to William Greger. If you would read your statement, thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Fuah. And I believe that the statues in question should stay because the people they represent are long gone, but they did things that we should not soon forget. I can read about them in history or books and watch a movie about Columbus, but seeing the person standing while I'm really brings history to life as people. We all make mistakes, but if we refuse to learn from them, we just make them again. So I want to learn from their mistakes. However, I believe that we should add a box with informational flowers near the statues so that people walking by can take the flyer and read about the statue's history, the history of the person, and all about the time that they lived in. Thank you for taking the time to hear my opinion.
Thank you very much. Thabo Salam. Okay, William Greger.
Thank you very much. I have two statements. I've really released them in August, but they're apoplectic for today. One, to deal with the Columbus statue, and the other one to the virtual civic virtue that you mentioned. The city council speaker joined several others in the proposed removal of the tower and statue at Columbus Circle honoring Christopher Columbus, a gift from the Italian people to recognize Columbus's enormous achievement in opening up the Americas to the entire world. Yet, the council speaker would rather focus on certain particulars in Columbus's life as justification to remove the statue honoring him. She's clearly made it known that she's not only doing it for the Caribbean people, but especially for the Puerto Rican people for which she's one. This is the same woman that supported and defended the honoring of convicted racist terrorist Lopez Rivera at the Puerto Rican Day Parade in New York City. When does this neat-jerk reaction applying 21st century values to the issue of several hundreds of years old end? Do we take down the Washington and Jefferson statues and monuments? They were both slave owners, and Jefferson was even having sex with his slaves. How about more recently, Franklin Delano Roosevelt? He interned the whole population of Japanese Americans just for being that. Now we have the MTA that wants to remove the X symbol from Times Square, so it's not to offend anyone that it might be symbolizing the Confederate flag. It was clearly designed to show the crosswords of the world, Times Square. I would just wonder if people complained that the X might refer to Malcolm X and some of his controversial topics, would that be removed then? I gather not. It's time to stop the tendency to erase history and learn from it. These nonsense reactions from self-serving elected officials and others will fuel the heated emotional climate, and why didn't you divide amongst people instead of bringing them together? The civic virtue, I made the other comment. Once again, the public officials unveiled a newly restored fountain at Queensborough Hall in honor of women of Queens. What once stood there was a fountain of civic virtue. Its sculptor designed it as a triumph over unrighteousness. The statue was revealed at City Hall in 1922, and it cost $60,000 back then, that's fucu dollars. It depicted a scrapping nude male crucifying civic virtue, triumphing over two sides of vice and corruption. But people had a different interpretation of the artwork back then. It was later moved to Queensborough Hall in 1941 and remained there, unkept, unmaintained, and corroded for 71 years. Then in 2012, the city decided to secretly move the statue from public view to a private property in Brooklyn, a cemetery as it was noted. What should bother most people is the lack of public forum in its removal. We're at a time in our history where certain individuals or groups of people believe they have a right to reinterpret an artist's meaning in his work, and therefore apply 21st century attitudes to their early meaning at that time. I recall not too long ago when city fonts were used to present an artwork depicting a crucifix in a jar of urine. Back then, the radical liberals defended the artwork and chastised the critics for imposing their narrow-minded viewpoint on an artist's own interpretation. How far have we come from that point? The righteous place for civic virtues is back at City Hall to remind all the elected officials, particularly this current administration, that we cannot run a family hall or act like a boss queen. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So the next is Phil Ornstein, Steve Mulundy, and Tashal... Trashal... Trashal Pex. Okay, Phil, you're... Are you Phil? Yes, you're up.
Yeah, I... Good morning, it's good morning. My name is Phil Ornstein. I am Queens resident, president of America's oldest Republican club, the Queens Village Republican Club, and yes, we Republicans are alive well here in Queens and New York City. We're composed of people from all races, cultures, and religions, and we unite on the basis of our love of our country and our Constitution. And this forms the basis of why we object to tearing down our historical statues of historical figures in our history and the history of Western civilization. The reason why we value this is because we love our freedoms, we love our liberties, we love our democracy, we love our country. And I speak on behalf of many people who feel it's wrong to judge whether or not... I mean, we can judge, but to tear down our statues is just plain wrong. I believe that some statues are considered symbols of hate because of the past of owning slaves or being colonizers or whatever that these figures did in their past that was wrong. I believe it may be wrong according to today's statues. Such great American figures as George Washington, Thomas Jefferson, of course, Christopher Columbus, there are five statues dedicated to his memory here in New York City. I believe Benjamin Franklin, Teddy Roosevelt, and others may be on the chopping block. My question to you is, is this a precedent? If these statues are considered for removal, is the next step to remove their names from our history books? Is the next step to remove them from our textbooks, our social studies curriculum in our schools and our colleges? That's a question I have for this panel. Also, I'd like to bring up another consideration, real quick if I may. Another symbol of hate which seems to be, you know, missed in all this discussion is the very Democratic Party itself, which according to history, the Democratic Party championed slavery, supported slavery, and opposed the 13th, 14th, and 15th amendments. The KKK was the terrorist arm of the Democratic Party. And if we are considering, you know, historical figures, markers, and monuments, why not consider the legacy in history and the leaders of the Democratic Party as well? Thank you for allowing me to make my statement.
Okay, what's that? So, we have, I'm sorry, do we have Joseph, what's the last name? Gabriardo, good joint, I'm sorry. And then, are you Mr. Pace?
Yes.
Okay, you're up next.
Hello, my name is Shashawn Chikin-Pace. I am, I believe that the statues of people who hurt others to become famous should be removed because of the crimes that they committed. Columbus helped to kill a lot of people, a lot of Native Americans, just to take their lands and people. Like Dr. Jane Sims hurt slave women just to learn more about their human bodies. No one should ever have to suffer to make another person so famous that they can so... Sorry.
Say goodnight.
So, famous that they get to be remembered forever. I say remove all the statues and replace them with leaders from our area who did get great things and did not have to hurt anyone to do them. That we would be a person that I would be proud to look up to to when I am walking in the park. Thank you. Thank you for taking the time to hear my opinion.
Thank you. Joseph Greger, you're up next, yes.
Thank you very much for having me for admission. I'm humbled to be among some great speakers today. I would appreciate if people would stop telling me what I, as an Italian-American, am offended by. It's just something that inflames the process, and maybe we should avoid doing that because I know I can't tell anybody what inflames that. I represent the Conference of Presidents of major Italian-American organizations. It's an organization representing Italian-Americans throughout the United States. I'm a larger organization, and I'm privileged to be here. I can't repeat everything that was said, I can only say that my own personal experience was I was raised by my grandmother in Red Oak, Brooklyn, and for 16 years, she raised me and never mentioned that Christopher Columbus was great. She said that he was a voyager, she said that he thought beyond his own limitations, she said that he traveled beyond his own limitations, but she never said that he was a great. And if you open up to these papers, we'll see that people that we think are great in Washington are kind of falling by the wayside. So maybe she was way a bit ahead of her time for a sixth-grade graduate. I wanted just to ask the commission to consider three things when they consider these statues. One is the time period that a person did something to be recognized for their achievement. So in the case of Christopher Columbus, what did he do, when did he do it? Was it legal, was it ethical, was it moral, and did it benefit society? And in Christopher Columbus's case, who did he do it for? Did he do it for America, or did he do it for another country? I would ask that you consider that. The second thing is, when was it that he was immortalized? When was it that America, and before him, King George, immortalized him by naming chartering Columbia University? When was it that the person that's being immortalized was immortalized, and why? Christopher Columbus, we know, began to be immortalized during the period that Italians were being asked unto this country to find a better way of life. And third, and this is very important, is why are we now being asked to remove it? So I would recommend strongly that we don't start taking down statues, but we start adding to the history. We start looking at indigenous people, we start looking at blacks, Hispanics, and people that have made a difference. Bring them to the litmus test, let's go forward. What you're taking away is part of my bringing up. I brought my children up the same way. I'm listening to, put kiosk up and put labels up. My 13-year-old kid, when I brought them to Columbus Circle, they Googled it before I finished telling them my story about my grandmother. Every kiosk is in every 13-year-old kid's hand. Thank you very much for your time, and good luck.
Thank you very much. Okay, thank you. Kenny DeJesus, Eliad Gonzalez. It looks like you addressed that.
Is anything on?
Yes. Okay. Go ahead.
Hello, my name is Kenny DeJesus, and I believe that the statues should be to stay because they teach us about our history. If we cannot change the past, we should not change the statues. However, I believe that we should develop education programs to teach students like me about the good and bad things that have happened in our past. So together, we are always learned about why, about ways, not to repeat the mistakes of the past. Thank you for taking the time to hear my opinion.
Thank you, Mr. DeJesus. Mr. Gonzalez, you're next.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Eli Gonzalez, and I believe there's some statues to stay, like Columbus, because they did things that would have happened in history with or without them. But I also believe that the statues like Dr. Jane Sims in Brooklyn should be removed because they personally committed crimes to become famous. However, I believe that none of the statues should be destroyed because they are all part of our past. That is why I would recommend that all the statues be moved into museums after they are removed. This way, when I go to the museum, I can have someone to teach me about the good and bad things that the person may have done in better... that the person may have done in better space than a public space outside. Thank you for your time and to hear my opinion.
Thank you. Mr. Joseph.
Hello. My name is Giu Giusampa, and I believe the statue should stay because there we went to present it. I got in some way, Columbia was one of the first to, um... Your thing to discover. American and people from... They look up to him. However, I believe that we should add rights to the statue to teach students like me about person. Person, the statue, the reason. This way, when I walk past it, I can read and learn more about the man or woman who is that who is standing in stone of brick, me. Thank you for taking time of heard my opinion.
Thank you very much. And we have two more panels. The next will be Glenn Zicante? Yes. Fiocina and Serf and Serf Maltese. Is Mr. Maltese here? You're on this panel, yes. Great. Okay, Glenn, you are next.
All right, so, hi, my name is Glenn Gonzalez, and I'm the founder and CEO of movers and shakers. We execute direct action and advocacy campaigns for marginalized communities using virtual reality, augmented reality, and the creative arts. I'm here to speak today because the bottom line is in terms of what statue stands for, it's bigger than just the monument itself. If you think of the erasure of history, it doesn't make a difference in terms of whether a statue stands or it doesn't. Everyone knows who Adolf Hitler is whether or not there's a statue of him. And I'm coming to say that if you look at the definition of terrorism, the idea of terrorism is that it's someone who's coming to instill fear in civilians for a political purpose. If you look at the case of Christopher Columbus, the purpose was profit. Came in fourteen ninety-two, by fifteen fifteen, eighty percent of the original population was dead. And he said in his diary himself that young women were in high demand, nine and ten years old. Does New York City stand for pedophilia? Does New York City stand for terrorism? Doesn't really make sense. But at the same time, on the other side of the spectrum, we have the Nazi sympathizers immediately, or briefly pretending, immediately gone. And so what this says to me is that as a black man, my life does not matter. My last name is Gonzalez, it's a slave owner's last name. I don't know if my real last name is a result of Columbus because, number one, Haitian came, took over Hispaniola. Number two, at least why most black people are in this country is a result of the slave trade because, you know, the indigenous people, a lot of them died. They're like, well, okay, we need to make money. Let's bring in some black people. So now, we're here. So why is there a statue that glorifies that? Why is the erasure of Black and Brown history a reoccurring theme? Don't you think that if people understood with a layered context, in terms of the true history, that maybe immigration policy would be more sympathetic? Isn't this a sanctuary city? Wouldn't it make sense that maybe people would care when a black man is killed for not brutalized? But, whatever. Anyways, I just want to make a statement here. Our group movers and shakers, we're going to host a slave auction tomorrow at 1:00 P.M. in Union Square. And it's also an augmented reality art exhibit that reveals the true story of Columbus. It's protesting white supremacy as a whole. It's also protesting, protesting the erasure of Black and Brown history because we need layered context. We need to understand that it's an objective fact that Christopher Columbus was a terrorist, and it shouldn't stand, period. Thank you.
Thank you. Fiocina, you're next.
Yeah, hello, my name is Fiocina. I'm a Manhattan resident. I was born in France from a Dominican mother who was born herself on the border between Haiti and the Dominican Republic. I was born from a Japanese-American grandfather, and my father was an American-Japanese descendant, who himself grew up in France. My education came from France and from the Dominican Republic. And Columbus is the marker from the Dark Age to the Enlightenment movement. Columbus came back. Columbus is that marker that made the world change, or made the world change at that moment, from one side to the other, to the side where we ask questions. So the fact that this panel is here today is the first part of asking the question of what our monument stands for. And sometimes, we don't need to take everything apart to make a statement. And my simple recommendation as a New Yorker is that the statue of Columbus stays, but the street around it changes name to the Tahino Circle. So the Columbus statue would be the Tahino Circle, and the Columbus Avenue would become the Tahino Avenue. Simple change like that can remind people why historical things change. And as we discovered that people were not what they seem, they seem to be put back in the concepts of today. So we then have, with the virtual reality, with other things, we can educate our young. So my request is very simple here. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Serf and Maltese.
Hi, I'm very glad to be here, although I'm not as glad that we have this occasion.
You guys, you have to press the button.
I'm Serf and Maltese. I was a state senator in Queens for twenty years. I am the chairman of the board of Christa King High School and a co-founder, together with commendatory Aunt Pele Luccio of Queens of the Christopher Columbus Association. Fine, I need my glasses after all. As a preliminary, I have to say, just in the short time that I've been here, and of course, listening, as every good citizen is doing right now, to what's been transpiring, it does seem that every grievance, every complaint, every recrimination is being heaped on not only Columbus, but others. As an Italian-American, who is co-founder of the Christopher Columbus Association and a covenieri united by the Italian government, I am directing my comments to Christopher Columbus. But I certainly feel that we do not want to emulate the book burners. We do not want to emulate the iconic class who have destroyed such an important part of our history, not only here, but in Europe and in Asia. So at any rate, I join with my dear friend Aunt Pele Luccio, objecting to those politicians and Columbus detractors bent on rewriting history according to their predilections, undermining the process, Columbus, Italians, Italian-Americans, and the Christian tradition that Columbus represented. The great historians of Harvard and Johns Hopkins, starting with Justin Windsor, Herbert Baxter Adams, and the many qualified Age of Discovery scholars, since then Samuel Elliott Morrison, Fred Schiapelli, et cetera. Even the most famous navigators of the time, the Portuguese, would not go where Christopher Columbus went four times, but in doing so, brought to the full flowering, the Renaissance spirit of expansion and discovery. To those who cite this so-called cruelty, as I heard earlier today, I point out, according to eminent historians, that Columbus, in fact, was replaced as administrator in Hispaniola, the first New World colony, because he was, quote, "too mild and compassionate." I strongly urge that all of us take a more historical perspective on the matter of Columbus and stop asserting our individual political, religious, and racial opinions to make gross and untenable points that disparage and denigrate not only Columbus, but his heritage, nationality, religion, and all those who honor and venerate him and his historic accomplishments. I do want to say, with due deference to this distinguished panel, you are there partially to serve as a buffer, a buffer for the chief executive of New York City. And I caution him, I counsel him, that if you succeed in the purpose that many people are urging you, a road that they're urging you to take, that our present mayor will go down in history as the one who killed Christopher Columbus.
Okay, so, hold on. Nadia, you're saying there's one more panel? Okay, let me call up. Thank you very much. Constance Salvechio, Roger Drew, and Xenia Danté? And then there's one more panel? Okay, so there's two. Okay. Do we have Roger Drew and Xenia Danté? Here? Okay. Um, maybe those folks have departed. Oh, that's it, Glenn, okay. Xenia's off, okay. Roger Drew is here or not? No? Okay, so let me then ask these two. Well, what about this? Okay, why don't we, okay. Josie Hudson and Sammy Ruffey. And then we're gonna have J.C. Hall. Constance, why don't you proceed?
Okay, that's good. I'm Constance Salvechio, Maltese. As you heard, my husband was just before me. He goes to show your women's rights don't prevail over there. Not in her house, in any. I was the former Queens Council on the Arts president. I was dubbed Age of Discovery artist by Aunt Pele Luccio at the Columbus Catupan. It was nineteen eighty-eight when she asked me to do a series of portraits. I'm an artist, as I said. Do a portrait of Columbus, she said. Nobody knew what he looked like. At that time, I was studying in the Art Students League. I spoke to my instructor and I said, "I've just been commissioned to do Christopher Columbus, but nobody knows what he looks like." She said, "It's easy. Go out, find a good-looking, young Italian guy, and have me sit for him." So that's what I did. I decided, since there was no internet information at the time, it was nineteen eighty-eight, I had to go to different libraries to get all my information. All I knew about Columbus was from school. In fourteen ninety-two, he sailed the ocean blue. They didn't teach him much more than that. Probably still don't. And I started reading about the man. I realized, here's an extraordinary thing happening. He was an ordinary man doing extraordinary things. He was a young visionary whose main desire was to explore. He knew that wasn't going to get him the money that he needed. So he offered something better. "Anybody that will give me enough money to sail the ocean blue, I will be able to bring back gold." He thought he was going to India. As you probably all know, I'm not going to give you a history lesson. He was gonna go where Vasco da Gama went, but he was gonna go in the opposite direction because the mapmakers at that time said that the world was not flat, it was round. But the other way, you'll still get there. He followed their advice. He went out with no more knowledge, with navigational instruments, than a half-hour hourglass that had to be turned every half-hour in order to keep time, with birds that would give him information when it was close to land, and in a ship that some of the houses in the Hamptons are bigger then. And he went out. These other two ships, as you all know, he got from two years ago. After the whole thing was over, he didn't find the gold, as you all know. But he was not interested in that. I guess that belligerent, let me go on quickly. I had an Age of Exploration exhibit at the Sierra Space Museum for three years, where the intrepid ship is in New York Harbor. There were three, the Nina, the Pinto, and the Santa Maria replicas outside. Children from school made trips into the ship. And I gave lectures because each one of these portraits that I did, I did thirteen, had a legend around their particular portrait that told about the man. And of course, the kids, especially the twelve-year-olds, they were taking this in school. He was not the first one here, there were others here before him. My answer to them, he was the first immigrant. He made four trips to and fro, the old world to the new world, and back again. And by so doing, he was bringing the culture of the new world into the old world, from the old world into the new world, and there was a melting of the two. Did things happen that shouldn't? Of course. A lot of the people that he had on his ships or at the cradle of the crop, don't forget. Some of them were probably even Shanghai. They were not the nicest of people. But he, on his own papers, on the top, wrote "Ex Pop Pharis," half-Greek, half-Latin, and it meant "Christ Pharis." He was a religious man, and as my husband pointed out, a mild-mannered man with compassion. And after he was brought back in chains in fifteen oh two, after his fourth voyage, he insisted on keeping the chains and went before Queen Isabella and told her, "After all I've done for you, this is what you do for me." He was replaced by all those that followed him. They too...
Sorry, we're out.
...time. Okay. As you can see, I'm pretty emotional about it. I spent four years on doing these portraits. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much. And this will be the final panel. We have Roger Drew, Sammy Ruffey, and Stephen LaCarter. I'm sorry? Oh, you didn't sign it? We're taking Roger Drew off. Do you leave it? Sammy Ruffey and Stephen LaCarter. Is, and you are?
Um, I'm a social worker.
I'm sorry, which neighbor?
Oh, LaCarter, Stephen LaCarter.
Okay. Is Sammy Ruffey here? If not, you'll be the final. Oh, you are? Okay, good. You're the final two. Thank you very much. And, go ahead. You're up.
So I'm a social worker here, working in Queens. And I'm also an artist, visual artist, a spoken word poet. One thing I want to say is thank you all for staying here. This is a very important topic. And thank you all to the mayor and for organizing this panel. I also want to say, just listening from all the things that people have said so far, I think there's a third way, and there's a lot of different options. And I don't think there's one sort of salve for everything. I just want to read some of the responses that I had to the servant, because I had one line, and I'll make my comments brief. "By virtue of being public, the public, by virtue of being public spaces, the public has a certain right to these spaces. If the monument exists as a symbol that reinforces ideas, beliefs, or actions that promote violence, both covert and overt, towards individuals or collectives, such monuments are not fit to be displayed publicly. This undertaking involves creating a new precedent that recognizes that what is erected now or in the past is subject to the scrutiny and reckoning of posterity. Erasing history is immeasurably dangerous. This is a delicate undertaking. We should not fret over how we treat monuments now will impact the future. Instead, we should consider the kind of future we want and how preserving, altering, or modifying these monuments will achieve that future. If we want a future that is inclusive and pathetic, respectful, equitable, and just..." If we want a future that is inclusive, empathic, respectful, equitable, and just, then let us consider the necessary modifications, alterations, and preservations to achieve that future. There is no universal salve. Outfitting monuments with QR code technology, as has been mentioned, for example, that links individuals to an internet database with 3D scans of the previous or current monuments, such as has been undertaken by the Project Mosel, that you can find at projectmosel.org, these could provide necessary and complete context. These objects are out in the public, and I think by and large, people don't have access to the complexity of their history. This leaves the fate of the physical objects, whether what we choose to do with them, sort of ambiguous. If we choose to erect public projects that replace existing monuments, we can use funds raised from the private selling of the current monuments to fund those projects. So there are many different options, as we've talked about. I think technology is going to play a really big part. And again, I just want to thank everybody for being here and for the panel. Thank you.
Hi, my name's J.C. Hallman. I'm the author of a piece in Harper's this month about the J. Marion Sims statue. And Sims only got mentioned a couple times today, which I think is notable because it was the August nineteenth protest at the Sims monument that really got all of this started, this connection of the what happened in Charlottesville to New York City. And that was a result of ten years of protests by activists who were objecting to the Sims statue, and the women in particular, who refused to take "no" for an answer and who refused to take "context" for an answer, the idea being that the parks were saying, "You can put up a plaque or a historical marker," and they said, "No, no, it has to be removed," and I agree with them. Specifically about the Sims monument, Sims history is really complex, and one of the things that I think needs to be said is that when we're considering monuments, we need to be allocating more resources to investigating those histories. That, we tend to pawn that kind of work off onto interns and stuff, rather than valuing it for what it is. And I think we live in an age when truth, and history, and fact, and news are being reevaluated and thought anew. And the monument issue is a symbol of that, and I think the Sims monument in particular is a key study in how that can go wrong, how a statue that was erected when there was no public commentary can result in a false history being enshrined. I think when you look at the Sims history, as I did, you realize that he was criticized for being reckless and lethal by his contemporaries. And I've found evidence that suggests that Sims was more or less acting as an informal agent of the Confederacy during the war. And it's not in my piece, but I'd be happy to supply to the commission if they're interested in it. I think I agree that everything about this is all about truth and history, as some people have said. But monuments themselves are not history unto themselves. As was said when the Sims monument was erected, one doctor said that a monument represents the values of the figure memorialized so that those values can be emulated. Not so that you can walk down the street and learn history. That's what we have history books for. They're not the same thing. A monument is a public commentary about the values of the person memorialized. And in those cases, when a history turns out to be false or when those values are revealed to be abhorrent, those statues should come down. Thank you.
Okay, so I think that this is concluding. Are we saying that we're giving anybody a final chance? If there's anybody who has not, I think we're wrapping it up. But I just wanted to say that this is the first of five of these. I'm gonna be absolutely a hundred percent of all of them, listening to everybody. We're gonna have a different variety of commissioners, some new faces we'll see at the next one, some, but I really want to thank everybody. And I will depart from tradition to give a hand to the folks from Kennedy High School. Thank you so much for coming. And I'm thrilled to have been here today. I'm really grateful for everybody who took the time out of their days to come here and testify. Thank you so much. So it concludes our versus public opinion. Thank you.